You know, I really like doing that. And, you know, we could take volunteers, student volunteers. Okay, so this meeting with McDowell Board of Education, which is our regular monthly session, business session, will come to order. And the first item of business this evening is to let you folks know that Mr. Settles will be joining us remotely. He is at the State Girls Softball Playoff Game this evening. So, we want to wish the Lady Titans good luck and Mr. Settles, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, guys. I appreciate that.
All right. Okay. We'll continue on. The next item of business is to approve this evening's agenda and is there a motion to do so?
Some.
A second. A motion by Ms. Mumon and a second by Mr. Frank. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor of the motion and the motion carries unanimously. It's customary for the board, for folks that aren't regularly attending, just to let you know that it's customary as we begin our evening together, that we take just a moment or two to sit together in silence and consider the day and the challenge before us, distill our hearts and our minds and prepare us for the evening. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. At this time, it's also our custom for the NJROTC Cadets from McDowell High School to present our colors and have the Pledge of Allegiance. So Chief Campbell, would you care to introduce the color guard this evening?
Yes, sir. All right, guys. Thank y'all for letting us be here today. Today we have Cadet Loftus in our color guard. The color guard is led by Cadet Burleson. Then we have Cadet Cope and then Cadet Allen. And today Cadet Helms, which is receiving another award today, he's going to lead us in the pledge.
Great.
So, please stand for the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five on this evening's agenda is superintendent remarks and I'd like to introduce Dr. Tracy Gritt, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. English. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and our colleagues and staff members and parents and students that are with us tonight, we're excited to have you. We've got some special recognitions tonight, so I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but we have quite a few folks that are being recognized for their accomplishments. So as this year winds down to on a close, we want to celebrate our many accomplishments. On Friday, we had sixty-one students graduating from McDowell Technical Community College with their associate's degree and twelve with certificates. Those students, some were from the high school, some were from MAI and MEC. On Saturday, we graduated a class of students from MEC and MAI. Now, I don't know if y'all picked up on that, but on Friday, we had sixty-one students who earned their associate's degree before we handed them their high school diplomas.
That's awesome.
It is awesome. We're excited for those students and we're really, really proud of them. Tonight, our Lady Titans, you can see Mr. Settles is there, will play in the third round of the playoffs at South Caldwell. They're coming off a big win against Myers Park High School from the Charlotte area. They won by fifteen points or fifteen runs, I guess I should say, in softball in the fourth inning, so they didn't even finish the game, they run ruled them. And they're carrying a significant momentum into tonight's game. Tonight, they're playing against South Caldwell, that's probably one of the top teams in the state, and folks there on a roll, so they have a good opportunity tonight. Our golf team had two individual golfers, both freshmen, involved in the regionals. One of them, Dobson, made it within a shot of qualifying for the state tournament. Future's looking bright in golf as well. Our other sports are closing with teams competing successfully in their spring seasons. Last week also marked a special time of the year as we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. Teachers, without you, student success would not be possible. We're entering the testing window for our traditional students and we'll send our graduates from McDowell High School off on June seventh. Board, I think in front of you, you guys have some invitations there to those graduations. We're proud of our students and their accomplishments this year and look forward to watching them grow in the coming years. Tomorrow evening, we'll recognize twenty-one retirees as they embark on life's next journey at the end of the school year. Most of them have thirty or more plus years to students of McDowell County Schools. Tonight, we have two special resolutions on the agenda. One for Dr. Gors, recognition of his work and what he did for McDowell County Schools. We're really excited about that one and what he did for the community. We will also recognize a resolution for pre-kindergarten in a unified joint resolution that in addition to our board will be signed by the commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce, McDowell Technical Community College, and McDowell Economic Development Authority. I can say that that is not something that you see every day. To be able to have a resolution that's before each one of those boards in a community is really phenomenal and that goes to the testament of this county that we work and live in. We also recognize the support of our county commissioners and thank them for meeting with us to review our budget needs for the coming year. Tonight, we celebrate the support of our community, especially the Marion City Council and Ms. Rhonda Silver who helped us establish the Summit Academy. We're excited to say that we have identified a leader for the school and look forward to watching it develop and grow. Finally, tonight, I want to thank the thirty-plus community volunteers and staff helping us review books. This work is underway and we hope to continue making progress through early June before taking a break for the summer. We anticipate continuing this work in August. Thanks again to our community support. If you're interested in helping with this work, you can find more information on our website. Thank you.
All right. Okay. We'll move along with this evening's meeting then, and next is student recognitions and Dr. Gritt, are you spearheading that?
I think we've got Ms. Daddell's going to be helping with us and Ms. Hamby and we've got some folks out there in the audience, Mary Finley's going to help.
There's Ms. Spencer too. All right.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is one of the best parts of my job. I think I get to recognize these outstanding students for their accomplishments in our state competitions. So, up first, we are going to recognize our Amazing Shake winners. And the Amazing Shake was held in February and our two winners, Ms. Evie Kenninger and Addison Gorecki, were our local winners and they went on to compete in Atlanta, Georgia in March at the Global Amazing Shake Competition, which they competed with three hundred and fifty other students across the world. Not only did they attend the competitions, but they also attended workshops. And just to give you an idea of what they had to do, the competition included the gauntlet round, which when they arrived, it was like going into the Atlanta airport, so they had to pretend to be an Uber driver and even had to participate in a Fox Theater performance, just to name a couple. And then they had to work the room, which this is where they had to talk to executives from the Fortune Five Hundred companies in Atlanta, Georgia. So these ladies represented as well and placed in the top third of their competitors. And Ms. Mindy Hutchins is also the sponsor for this and she does a great job every year not only setting up the McDowell County Schools' Global Amazing Shake, but getting these students ready for the global competition. So we're certainly proud of these ladies.
Here, it's going to take your picture.
Moms and dads, if you're out there, you're more than welcome to take all the time you need.
Good job, girls.
Good job, ladies.
Next, we will recognize our FPLA State Conference winners from our middle schools, beginning with the students from West McDowell. So placed in second place in career exploration and second place in community service project is Ms. Maggie Waycaster. And Ms. Addie Gorecki, placed fourth place in financial literacy. And the teachers that sponsored the FPLA at West McDowell, again, are Ms. Mindy Hutchins and Ms. Sarah Wills, and both those ladies do a great job preparing these students.
Ms. Hutchins, wouldn't you just love to come up and have your picture made with these young ladies?
Come on, come on. I thought I should.
Have Evie get in there too. Have Evelyn get in there too.
Next, we will recognize the state FPLA winners from Foothills Community School. Mr. Neil LaFountain, who could not be here tonight, but he placed fourth in mission and in pledge, which he had to memorize the pledge from memory and share. Next, Cassandra Perez, Neil LaFountain, and Alina Gonzalez placed third in the FPLA Chapter Activities Presentation. And Hadley Davis placed fourth in running an effective meeting. And the teachers that sponsor FPLA at Foothills Community School are Tasha Ramsey and Katie McFarlane. These winners will go on to compete. Congratulations. These winners will go on to compete at the National FPLA Conference in Orlando, Florida, June the twenty-eighth through July the third. And we know they will represent us well there too. Next, we will recognize our DECA winners. So Mr. Bailey Moss and Lyndon Wilson. These two students qualified for the international competition during the first round of the Virtual Business Challenge in October. They placed first in the DECA Southern Region and eighth in the world. And Ms. Heather Martin and Mr. Todd Queen do an amazing job with their DECA program and they competed in Anaheim, California, April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Wow. That is great. I did want to add too that this year was one of the record-breaking years for students in attendance at Anaheim, over twenty-one thousand students across the United States in seventy different countries. And for them to place eight in their category is amazing.
And we will recognize our Skills USA winner, Mr. Jared Helms, placed third at the Skills USA, which was held April the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth in Greensboro. He had to take a written exam on criminal justice knowledge, do a memory exercise, a call for service, a written report, a traffic stop, and a professional interview. And Mr. Chris Marsh is his teacher and he could not be here tonight.
I know you didn't get that from your father.
And so we're proud of all these students and they represent us well every time they go to competition and we wish those well that are going to Nationals. Thank you.
I think that you can just see what this type of competition does for kids. Just link over to Ms. Helms, we went to high school together. To have the presence that each one of these kids has come up here, not nervous, looking people in the eyes, I mean, just the life skills that you're teaching on top of the competitions is just amazing. Thank you for the work that all of y'all do.
And it's amazing to watch them. They represent McDowell County so well when they're out and about. They make us proud. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You folks are welcome to stay. We may have a door prize after a while.
We'll continue on then in item seven of staff recognitions and Ms. Amy Daddell, our Human Resources Director, is going to.
Yes, sir. Good evening. So last month, we got the honor to recognize those TA to teachers that are currently working for us as instructional assistants and going back to school to earn their degree in that they are the TA to teacher tuition reimbursement recipients. Now, we did recognize Ms. Reagan Wall, but for some reason, she was left out of the email loop and I just cannot allow her not to be able to get the recognition that she deserves. So I would like to call up one of our TA to teacher recipients, Ms. Reagan Wall. So what is a little unique about Ms. Wall is that she did complete her degree in December and is currently working as a first grade teacher at Nevo Elementary School. So we are super excited for Ms. Wall and we just, I could not let it go by and not give her opportunity to recognize her. So thank you all so much.
Y'all get a picture with the principal too.
Absolutely.
Okay. At this time, we'll hear our report from our teacher representative, Ms. Mary Ann Basley, and I understand she has a lot to share with us this evening.
Yes, packed presentation.
Good, good.
So this is my last presentation on schools. I have two left to focus on and I have for May, I have McDowell High School and McDowell Virtual Academy. Ms. Bennett was wonderful and sent me tons of great information about all the things happening at the high school and there's a lot. So I have several things to talk about with you. She sent me a little bit at the beginning from her. It says, "I've been very fortunate to be part of McDowell High School for seven years and still amazed on a daily basis at the opportunities that are provided to students. Having previously worked in another school system, I can attest to the level of instruction and educational opportunities, McDowell High School gives our students are ahead of the rest. There is a place for everyone at McDowell High School and this slideshow presentation only touches on a few of the events from spring semester." So again, this is full of tons of information from the high school. I went through this again to make sure I wasn't missing anything and a few things Dr. Gritt has already spoken on and are highlighted in here as well with some of our athletes and a few of the big competitions that have gone through. So first, we have our NJROTC program and the drill team is seventh in the region out of sixty-three teams and the marksmanship team qualified for Nationals. They traveled to Ohio earlier in the spring and some of the pictures up here show that not only are they leaders at their school, but they've gone out into the community. They are working on the Adopt a Highway project on the weekends and they also have visited some local nursing homes as well. Slide three has information here and photos with construction students. They put a roof on a building at Glenwood Elementary. They have a student who placed third in the NC/MCA Land of the Sky Masonry Contest. The Law and Justice students conducted a traffic accident investigation. I teach eighth grade and a lot of my students come through and they get to select their electives and make some choices for the next year and everyone wants to go into that Law and Justice class. After they see pictures and hear about it, they're super excited to get there. Cosmetology students practice their color techniques. The Horticulture II students have prepared for an ID plant assessment. They have to recall and memorize thirty-five plants that are used in the greenhouse, the nursery, and floral design industries. Culinary II students are recording their cooking show for a soup project and groups were assigned different regions within the United States and had to research that area, find a recipe based on the region, and prepare and execute the cooking show. Next, we have Welding I and II and Woodworking I and II. In Welding, they've had the opportunity to go to McDowell Tech and start on their welding certification. In Woodworking, the students have learned to build shelves, cabinets, and boxes. Students can test their levels in these with a construction rodeo that is held at Western Piedmont Community College. Automotive students are also super busy. They have rebuilt a nineteen-sixty-nine Chevelle motor. They're cleaning and reconstructing another one now. And their Fire Tech students know the safety rules for entering a burning building. A lot of them are also members of the community fire departments. This was, my eighth graders went on a tour up there and this was another super exciting part. Everyone thought this was fascinating. So these were super, super exciting for upcoming students to see as well. So Automotive students also went to Forsyth Tech Transportation Technology Center. So that was another thing that went for them. On the next slide, the Early Childhood students, they work at Head Start as part of their program requirements. The firefighting and public safety students toured the Fire Dex Production Facility in Old Fort and students learned about protective requirements for turnout gear as well as manufacturing processes. Culinary students were able to visit Go-Go Cinnamon Rolls in Old Fort to hear their business story. McDowell High School is excited to announce and launch a new internship program with Marion Police Department. I think this is wonderful. Their first intern, Kalani Herrera, she also went to East, who was wonderful, worked the night shift with Marion Police Department and is focusing on a motor vehicle collision case. And this partnership is making this happen with the Marion Police Department. Next, with our Titan athletes, several athletes have received scholarships and will be attending. We have Montree College on the wrestling team, Lee's McCray College for softball, Montree College for softball, and Farum College for baseball. And all of these students are wonderful athletes and scholars. On the next slide, our Bass Fishing Team for McDowell High School is one of the fastest growing teams that they have. They travel between Lake James, High Rock Lake, and Lake Norman. Last year, they had a student who earned a college scholarship while they were on this team. Next, academics is of course super important and they have tons of stuff that they've highlighted for CTE and their electives, but their academics are shining as well. Students are applying what they've learned in creative ways. Their physical science classes have built and tested bottle rockets at Titan Stadium. They have a Science Olympiad team that traveled to NC State to compete in air trajectory. And another student used his computer skills to design a program that his English classroom used to assist with attendance and hall pass use. The best thing about McDowell High School is the amount of support that students and staff provide for each other on a daily basis. The Special Olympics athletes had a competition and they were cheered on as they exited the school through a walkway that lined the halls made up of teachers and students. The prom closet is full of dresses, shirts, and flags for any student who would like to shop there and their prom is at the end of the month. On Wednesdays during Titan Pride, the MHS has a Pickin' and Grinnin' group. They meet, sorry, to sing songs for anyone who needs a quick pick-me-up during the day. And this is just a fraction of the great things happening at our high school. On the next few slides, McDowell Virtual Academy. Recently, they had students who attended prom in April with McDowell Early College and the McDowell Academy for Innovation and they will have thirty seniors who will be graduating from MVA in June, which is wonderful. Next month, I plan to highlight celebrations within our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basley. Golly, yeah. Sounds like McDowell High School is just a bee's nest of activity.
Culinary students were able to visit Go Go Cinnamon Rolls in Old Fort to hear their business story. McDowell High School is excited to announce and launch a new internship program with Marion Police Department. I think this is wonderful. Um, their first intern, Kalani Herrera, she also went to East, who was wonderful, worked the night shift with Marion Police Department and is focusing on a motor vehicle collision case. And this, this partnership is making this happen with the Marion Police Department. Next, with our Titan athletes, several athletes have received scholarships and will be attending, uh, we have Monterey College on the wrestling team, Lee's McCray College for softball, Monterey College for softball and Faram College for baseball. And all of these students are wonderful athletes and scholars. On the next slide, our bass fishing team for Mc- McDowell High School is one of the fastest growing teams that they have. They travel between Lake James, High Rock Lake and Lake Norman. Last year, um, they had a student who earned a college scholarship um while they were on this team. Next, academics is of course, super important. They have tons of stuff that they've highlighted for CTE and their electives, but their academics are shining as well. Students are applying what they've learned in creative ways. Their physical science classes have built and tested bottle rockets at Titan Stadium. Um, they have a science Olympiad team that traveled to NC State to compete in air trajectory. And another student used his computer skills to design a program that his English t- English classroom used to assist with attendance and hall pass use. The best thing about McDowell High School is the amount of support that students and staff are pro- provide for each other on a daily basis. The Special Olympics athletes had a competition and they were cheered on as they exited the school through a walkway that lined the halls made up of teachers and students. The prom, the prom closet is full of dresses, shirts and flags for any student who would like to shop there and their prom is at the end of the month. On Wednesdays during Titan Pride, the MHS has a pickin' and grinnin' group. This, they greet, they meet, sorry, to sing songs for anyone who needs a quick pick-me-up during the day. And this is just a fraction of the great things happening at our high school. On the next few slides, McDowell Virtual Academy. Um, recently, they had students who attended prom in April with McDowell Early College and the McDowell Academy for Innovation. And they will have thirty seniors who will be graduating from MVA in June, which is wonderful. Next month, I plan to highlight celebrations within our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basley. Sounds like McDowell High School is just a bees nest of activity. Ms. Bennett can attest. Okay, we'll move along then. Next item, item nine is unfinished business. And the first uh item we need to have an update on is our bus driver update and Dr. Grit, I think is going to lead that conversation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, folks, if you will remember, we've had some conversations about bus drivers um throughout the year. Um, and at the beginning of this year, uh, we looked at ways that we can improve uh with the numbers of bus drivers that we had and we, we did a pretty good job of uh taking some of the routes off the road, um, because our numbers were down a little bit. So we improved our efficiency and and really improved the the number of buses that were rolling every day. Well, as the school year went on, um, and we've gotten into the spring, uh, we've had a few bus, bus drivers retire, resign, um, and we're short drivers again. Um, and that, that started to kind of show itself a little bit uh really in April and um we had a few folks that came on board actually this month and it improved a little bit, but overall, we're still struggling with bus drivers. Um, and and I say that to say anybody out there who wants to drive a bus, we'd love to have you. Ms. Daddell will help you get signed up and Ms. Thomas would would be, Mr. Thomas would be uh glad to have folks signed up, but I had mentioned to to the board at one point, uh, we may need to look at some policy um in order to um to affect this and and really what I'd like to do and I've, and I've spoken with uh Mr. Campbell about how um we could, we could develop a policy. I've also worked with our uh child nutrition program, our uh maintenance uh program through with custodians as well as um Mr. Oliver and um Ms. Daddell and Ms. Rampy to really look at what categories we could target as far as dual employees. And that's something that right now we have teacher assistants uh that are required to get a bus license uh with us, uh, but we really don't have a policy to support that. Um, so, so what I would like to do is just have consensus from the board um to be able to take this to the policy committee and begin to develop a policy that would allow us to to say, moving forward, we'd like to hire folks um in those positions that I mentioned. Uh, child nutrition becomes a little bit more difficult because we have less full-time employees there. Um, but with their custodial staff, uh, we really feel like we need the support there. Uh, we also would like to be able to every two weeks, uh, when we, if we have new hires, uh, there is a uh class that they can take. So rather than starting with um at the school, they would actually start in the class um and go ahead and begin uh taking the bus driver class. Uh, when I spoke to Mr. Campbell about it, he said there are a number of districts in the region uh that were doing this. I myself have done something similar to this uh in a previous district and saw some success. Uh, but what I don't want to do is dip any lower than where we are. And I think we have given it a, a really, really good effort to do our best this year. We're still struggling with bus drivers. Um, but I wanted to bring that up to, to the group and really tonight, just asking for consensus on that. Um, because really the work needs to be done in the policy committee to uh develop the policy. And of course, that would come at about the right time because we're s- we're scheduled to get our spring policies uh from this, Mr. Campbell within the month anyway. Ideally, uh, the policy co- committee could meet and work on that. Uh, we, we would hope to bring something before the board for a first read in June. Um, and and if all goes well, we would be ready for a final read in July. If we're backed up or delayed a little bit with that, then of course, that could extend out to August. Uh, but one of the things that we wanted to do is uh to be fair to our employees that we have now uh that didn't sign an agreement to do that, uh, we didn't, we didn't feel like it would be a good idea to, to, to retro that. Um, it's, it's one of those that those folks have already signed on, their uh job responsibilities and duties are already there, uh, so we wouldn't want to uh move backwards in that. Uh, Mr. Campbell would help us with our wording in that as well. Uh, we would offer it um to, to all of our employees to be able to, to do that, but it's gonna boil down to a- as a system of schools, school system, we're going to have to work together in order to overcome this. For example, if Eastfield has a, has a custodian that is available to drive and we need somebody at the high school that afternoon, uh, we're gonna have to work together in order to make that happen. Because at the end of the day, we're having far too many times where students are delayed getting to school or there are late, late bus routes. And I know Ms. Bennett's shaking her head because she's the recipient of a lot of those phone calls and we're trying to explain to parents um that this is a staffing shortage issue. Um, so that's really where we stand with our buses. I feel like it's a uh, it's not a silver bullet, um, but it's a step in the right direction to, to ensure that we're doing the right thing. We'll also say that the, the additional um pay would be made on the bus. Um, it, it's advantageous for folks to be on the bus. It pays better um than what some of the entry level positions do, particularly at custodian, um, as well as uh the opportunity to earn some overtime. So if folks are, if folks are interested in working with us and they'd like to earn extra, extra dollars, it's a way to take care of our staff as well. Um, but really, this is uh just a direction that I'd like to take us. Um, but I'll, before I did that, I wanted to uh, you know, be real clear about what the, what that would look like.
Any uh questions or anything for Dr. Grit?
I do. Uh, Dr. Grit, I'm sorry.
If, if you will, so Don.
Sorry about that, Don. Uh, Terry, I, I know you were in this program as well and I know that it's a federal thing, but when I was in high school, I drove a bus. And, and we had one of the safest records in the nation. Very few wrecks, courses of buses were governed at thirty-five miles an hour. But could we not look, because this is not just a problem with us, it's, it's a national problem. But North Carolina had one of the best uh student bus driving programs in the nation. Is there any way we might could re- have legislature or somebody relook this, look at this and, 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 you know, as an opportunity for kids to uh make money and be responsible and Terry, I, I, I know you drive a bus and, and I'm telling you, very, very few, I, I can't even remember a wreck that happened when I, when I was driving a bus and I drove for three years. And I, I, I just, I, I know there's a lot of federal things that are involved with that, but I, I think a good lobbying program might help with that and, and man, it would relieve a lot of pressure on teachers as well.
I, I, to me, I think that sounds like a great idea and I wouldn't have any problem supporting that. Um, I remember student drivers as well. Um, as a matter of fact, I had, I had several of them. Um, I, you know, it would take some lobbying though. It really would. It takes some, it would absolutely take some lobbying. That's what it would be. So, um, but I, I would, I would be in support of that.
I have a question um about the groups that you're mentioning, looking at that uh the dual employees. You said teacher assistants, custodial, child nutrition and maintenance and.
Not, not maintenance, no ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, it, Garvin shrinks was in charge of the maintenance and custodians.
Okay, I thought you said maintenance.
It becomes problematic to look at maintenance because we end up pulling them off of, off of something that, I mean, right now, if they're working on HVAC system or water pipe or something like that, we can't afford to pull them off.
I, I just misunderstood. I thought you did say maintenance, but because that wasn't even my question. I was questioning um teacher assistants.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you mentioned um Eastfield needing, uh, we'll say, let's say the high school needed a bus driver and we have a teacher assistant at Eastfield that we could call. Now, I'm just gonna say after thirty years in the classroom and you're, you're looking at, and I get it, everybody's gotta work together. But you're looking at your K-two teachers, K-one that have, they, they use those teacher assistants as helpers, teachers in their classrooms specifically. Um, would, would TAs be called to leave their elementary schools?
They could be, but to be quite honest with you, most of the TAs that we're talking about are already driving a bus at their elementary schools. Cause I mean, we're limited on the number of TAs that we have at this point anyway.
Right, but I, 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 I a hundred percent understand the problem that they have at the high school when you have kids sitting there. But I also know that when I planned for what we were doing in the classroom, the, the educational experience in the classroom, it involved me and my assistant.
Sure.
And so when you're just notified at the last minute, hey, we need a, we need a driver at McDowell High, Angela, you're gonna have to go. Then the educational, because she's gonna have to leave my school earlier to get to the high school to get on that bus or if she's driven in the morning, gonna get there late. You know, I, I, I get it. I understand it, but I also understand educational integrity of the day.
Absolutely. No question about it. You know, it's when we're, when we're short three buses that aren't making it to school until a second load and they're getting there at nine thirty AM, we're really doing a disservice to those kids. And we've got to find a way and, and really the only, the only suggestion I can say is all hands on deck. Um, what I wanna do is involve our principals. So our principals could say, hey, I'm gonna go to my custodian first, so we try not to affect the classroom. And that'll be a conversation we have with our principals and with the, the staff who are actually calling for those positions. Right now, it's done with just putting out a spreadsheet saying, can anybody help and volunteer? And our volunteers are volunteering. We have volunteers uh from, from this office who are driving a significant amount as well and missing part of their duty to be able to do that as well as many of the other schools. So I mean, we're, we're doing, we're doing the best we can with what we've got right now, but to be honest with you, our sub pool is that limited too. When we're down to those three drivers or three that are not on the bus, uh, we're, we're limited on those amount of folks that we can ask.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Dr. Grit, do you see this as something where um like you'll kind of anticipate that Ms. Baker's go- I'm sorry, we're picking on you. Ms. That Ms. Baker's going to lose her TA for the next month? Or is, are you anticipating that this will be, gosh, someone called in sick today and so today we need to take that person? I mean, how, how do you see this kind of playing out? In other words, I hear what Ms. Silver's saying and to me, yeah, that's awful and, you know. But if she knew that she wasn't gonna have that, then, then that helps her plan her day and her, she, she adjusts her activities knowing that the end of the day, she's gonna lose that person.
Sure.
Versus, oh, by the way, I gotta pull your TA this afternoon when her lesson's already, you know what I'm saying? Like, how do you see this playing out? Is this a last minute thing or is this gonna be, hey, we're gonna plan this and we are all hands on deck? Cause we're in a bad situation, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think both things would be true. For the most time, you're gonna know ahead of time and that's what, right now, we've got a good system without going out. Um, and it says, hey, we're gonna need a driver Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. This person has a medical appointment. Um, one of our bus drivers may have a medical appointment or something going on and they're gonna be absent those days so you know. Or it may be that, you know, there's an illness or something going on in the family, so they need to take a month off. Um, so I mean, you're gonna have any, any one of those, but ultimately, what I'd like to see is us develop a greater pool of bus drivers. So we can be, you know, smarter about how we're working through these things. I mean, that, that would be the goal.
Yeah, I mean, we can't have kids coming in at nine thirty. I mean, you, you've lost an hour and a half of your day. I mean, and then we can't really hold them responsible for missing that curriculum if they're not there. I mean, that's just kind of crazy.
And it's one of those and, and Mr. Frank's exactly right. Um, a- after COVID, we, we just didn't see bus drivers come back and that's a nationwide issue. It's not something that's, it's not something that's just uh McDowell County.
So the state doesn't allow us to hire seniors in high school?
Correct.
And I would say the NJROTC people that were in here are probably as reliable of a, of a bus driver as you would, as you would want.
Not to mention the lessons that it, that it certainly teaches in a normal way.
I, I didn't know, but um Ed was bus driver too and I left him out.
Absolutely.
Well, there's a couple of good volunteers right there.
Well, I gotta go tomorrow to get my CDLs. I, I do drive an active bus. I've, I've got to.
We sign up folks every two weeks, I think, is what we're trying to do. So if anybody out there would like to take those classes, we're gonna, we're gonna start doing those on the virtual uh platform, a lot like Mr. Suddles is tonight. It's actually, it's done um with a live person on, on camera and you can interact with them just like you're in the classroom. Uh, previously, we'd kind of been waiting on the class to come around and it circulates about every three months. So we're hoping that that will help to, um, to help speed these things up.
Okay. Well, this is something the policy committee is going to take up.
Yes, sir.
Very shortly.
Yes, sir.
All right, and uh Ms. Popo?
Can, can I ask, I, just, I recognize that we're in a desperate spot, but like, have we exhausted every option? Like, are there other, have we really looked to see what maybe other districts are doing to have some, you know, success? I mean, to be honest, when I hear this, I'm just like, I don't love this. You know, requiring custodians to drive buses to rec- you know, that that's a part of, I mean, I don't even, you know, hearing from some of the TAs who for years drove buses and the, and particularly the older that they got, you know, the, the amount of anxiety that a number of our TAs expressed to me about driving those buses, you know? Um, it, it, so that the fact that that's a requirement, I, it always kind of was like, ooh, I don't love that. And then so to add more people in on this required policy, uh, to be honest, it, it's, I'm not loving this, but if it's what we have to do, then, then I, I get it, right? Cause we have to, we have to get kids in, into the classrooms. But like, are, are we sure we've done the exhaustive, like, we've looked ev- what everybody has done and is anybody being successful outside of this as the solution?
And I, I may not be able to answer that question fully, just to be completely honest with you, but looking across the state, we're doing better than others in this area. Um, I talked to the executive staff about a neighboring county in the, in the center of the state that were calling and saying, sorry, we're just not running buses this week for X amount of students. And to me, that's really not acceptable. Um, you know, and the, the policy that I, that I'm familiar with was um one of the ones that was enra- enacted in that district in nineteen ninety-one. Um, so I mean, I don't think that, so they had the policy that was already in place and they could fall back on that policy to be able to help it. Um, as far as what's being done in other areas, I'm not sure what's being done successfully because you continue to hear more problems with bus driving. So I know that the policy was there, um, it supports what we were doing and really, we, we kind of need a policy, just to be honest with you, um, for what we're asking our TAs to do. Uh, because that's not technically in policy right now. Um, but, but you know, we also have to have some provisions in there about uh medical absences and different things like that that do give some, um, some, some, you know, there are some limitations with that, but um, I think it's important that and what, what I saw be successful was when you knew you were going to be a bus driver in your job description. You knew that when you came into the job. So rather than going back and retro asking these folks to be part of it, you know ahead of time what you're signing up for. And then starting in the bus driver class, if you get into that bus driver class and you work for three days and you go, this isn't for me, then you know ahead of time. So we've not given you a false hope or false sense or anything. So to me, I think those pieces are pivotal for, for the policy because it, it allows those, those folks to really see what they're getting into. Um, but as far as success um on buses right now, um, I, I saw when we, when we re-interacted our, our, our policy and really fell back on it and got involved with the training ahead of time, I saw our busing problem go from what we're dealing with here. Um, and I was in a different district at the time to not really a problem at that point. And the communication between principals was good and kind of like what Ms. Silver was asking. It wasn't always to call on this TA. It was, you know, we kind of rotated around the schools when you had a substitute. Um, so I mean, it starts to work itself out, but um, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure I have the answer. Um, you know, and I, and again, I don't think that this is the silver bullet. Um, I think you're still gonna have issues, but I think it, I, I have seen this work.
Okay.
All right. We'll continue on then. Uh, next item, Ms. Rampy's going to come up. It's uh time again to refresh the Chromebooks. And Ms. Rampy has uh something for our consideration this evening.
On a side note, softball's up two nothing. So.
All right.
Now, I think it's still the end of the first inning, so we may have only been the ones bad.
First inning.
Okay.
Is it raining or not?
It's pouring rain.
Rain delay?
I don't think they delayed it.
They're playing.
All right.
Let's go Titans.
All right.
In your. In your packet uh was information uh regarding the Chromebook refresh that we have this year. We, we do this every year. Uh, but in the last few years, it's been including in that ESSER plan as well. But we did want to give that to you. It was uh Trofira is who we are using for that. They are on state contract. And the information for those purchases are in your packet. It was a thousand and ninety-four units uh that we've. And the information for those purchases are in your packet. It was a thousand and ninety-four units, uh, that we've purchased of Illinois, no, three hundred E Chromebooks. And again, that will be out of Esser this year. This will be the last year that Esser will be having our refresh.
Any questions? Approximately how many Chromebooks?
A thousand ninety-four.
And about how much does that cost us?
In here, it's about, uh, four hundred and ninety, one thousand plus taxes, not on the back page.
About five hundred and twenty.
Five hundred and twenty, yes, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Every year, we have to do this.
Yes.
Okay.
And Illinois is a North Carolina based company, isn't it? I like the fact that it's a North Carolina based company.
And they're an excellent manufacturer. All of the, the, the colleges that I've ever worked with, that is the only computer that they will purchase now. It's because they're very durable. They're, this is a really great deal. I read through the contract. This is a really great deal for us.
And so this is, uh, an ongoing expense, but it's a necessary expense for our students' sake. And, uh, sometimes we have to adjust other places in order to put kids first. So just keep that in mind as budget rolls around this year. Okay.
Can, can I ask a couple?
Yes, sir. You sure may.
Um. So because the computers are purchased on state contract, they're not formally bid?
We do not formally bid those. We do quote those with other companies, but we don't do like a formal closed bid or anything like that. Because the state has already bid that out for us for state contract pricing. But just in case there's another, uh, pricing out there on state contract, we do look at that from some other sources as well.
So can you break out, I'm assuming from kindergarten to the fifth grade, the computers stay in the school?
Yes, and then we refresh sixth grade and ninth grade. And then Garrett probably is the more of an expert on that, but they, they do not take those home in kindergarten. I don't believe they take those home in, did they take those home in middle school?
They do.
They do take them?
They do.
Okay. That was before my kids' time.
She didn't take.
Garrett, how much do we, uh, just off the top, your guesstimate on how much we save on that warranty? Of the number of middle school students who ruin those Chromebooks? It's huge. And I can, I, we've had to return a couple. And so knowing that that happens and we only had to pay fifteen dollars to cover the cost of, you know, that, that's, I mean, that's why I. This is hu- this is a really, really good contract, knowing particularly that replacement and the warranty.
Any other questions for Ms. Rampy, Dr. Gre, any of the staff regarding the Chromebook refresh? If not, then is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Pupo makes the motion. Ms. Mumal makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Mr. English, if I could just say one thing about the, the books, the, the Chromebooks as well, just one. Just, just want to remind folks that, that is Esser funding, um, and that will definitely fall back within our budget. I think that's, that's critical, uh, critically important for us to remember that, that amount will fall back into our county level, uh, budget next year.
Okay then. Uh, next is, uh, Mr. Brian Oliver with the facilities update.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gre, school leaders, honored guests. It's my pleasure and privilege to share with you facilities update tonight. I'd like to start, um, Garrett, if you could pull up the photos. So we're gonna start with a, a huge water repair that we had to do last week at East Middle. And I just want to brag on our maintenance department for the, the effort they made and also the school leaders for the. It's a huge inconvenience and they did a great job of managing the facility. Uh, with less than maximum water service for the week or for the three days. But this is what it looked like on Monday afternoon in the steam tunnel. And so just to, just to give you an idea of how fortunate we were last week. If you know, you've heard about all the different events that happened in the East Middle Auditorium at the end of the week. Well, if this had not been detected on Monday evening, um, we would have been, we would not have been able to use that facility this weekend. So we're very fortunate and the way that this was detected initially was, uh, the school had a lockdown drill on Monday afternoon. And the students in the band room go in the instrument room. And I'm sure I'm telling Ms. Basni, she already knows all this, cause she lives it. But, um, the students that were in the, um, instrument room. Being very quiet because it's a lockdown, they heard water and they told Mr. Wilson, it sounds like there's a shower on. Back there. And so there's an access point there in the instrument room that goes down into the steam tunnel. And Mr. Wilson listened to the students and then he checked out what they were saying and then he reported it to Ms. Whitman and Mr. Wheeler. So go ahead, Garrett. Thank you. So this is, that is the actual hole in the floor in the hallway. That, uh, where they had to work on the floor. Go ahead and move, move through. This is where they're pouring the concrete. These are a little out of work, I'm sorry. This is what it looked like Tuesday morning when they were cutting the hole in the floor. And they're cutting through concrete to get to the subfloor. Uh, and then below the concrete is, uh, what you just saw in the, the access point previously. Go ahead, Garrett. All right, this is, this should have been the second photo, I'm sorry. This is what Mr. Wilson and Mr. Wheeler saw when they looked into the steam tunnel. Uh, which is, it looks like a closet up above and then there's a, an access on the floor. And that's what they saw. So you've seen what it looked like on Monday evening, which was the water in the steam tunnel. And then you saw the, all the dust and debris and all that on Tuesday morning. Um, and then a lot of digging to get down to the point, uh, till they found the, the, uh, part of the water main that had failed. And then the repair that was made, which was basically a, a collar and, uh. Uh, two couplings to hold that together, two clamps down on the collar. This is what it looks like today, after all that repair. So next, the wooden floor, this wooden subfloor that goes below the, the vinyl tile will be put back in place and le- and leveled out. And then the vinyl tile will be replaced and it'll look like a hallway again. Anyway, I just wanted to brag on the group, the, the crew from Manus did a great job. As you know, one of our, our master plumber is not with us right now. He's on medical leave. So Chris, he's our plumber assistant. Right now, he's the lead plumber. And, uh, we also have an interim plumber who's been with us two weeks. And so you saw in Garvin's write-up, he said, we broke him in right last week. That was, uh, that was, uh, his exposure during his second week here with us. But a great job to the team, uh, for allowing East to continue to have school, although it took a lot of effort from the school leadership and staff. Uh, to be able to operate, uh, at less than full capacity. And we appreciate the patience of the staff and students, uh, during the very challenging time. But all of that effort allowed East to have school. It also allowed all those events to take place over the weekend. Which wouldn't have been able to be at East if they had not been repaired.
Mr. Oliver, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We have to bite the bullet on that loss of water. The bill correct or?
Sir, there are times, if, if you've had a, if you've had some kind of catastrophic incident like that, sometimes the water department will work with you. So it'll, it'll be up to facilities with county to tell us, you know, what that's gonna look like. But yes, we are responsible for it, but sometimes they, they will cut us a huss.
Well, would you?
Or something like that.
Keep us aware of it?
Yes, sir. We will.
Thank you very much.
We certainly will. Okay, Garrett, go ahead and move forward. So this is just an update on the locker room facilities at McDowell High School. You can see all new paint, all new lights, all new flooring there. And we're getting close, getting really close. Go ahead, Garrett, thank you. That's the entry to the team room for the varsity basketball team, the boys team. And again, new paint, new flooring, new lights. Go ahead, Garrett. That's looking into the team room. And the lockers will go back into that space. Again, all new surfaces. And just another look down the hallway from the far end looking back. Uh, it's, it's a totally different space. The, all of those spaces are extremely, just. Extremely nice and totally upgraded compared to what they were. And it's long overdue and we're really excited about what this is gonna provide for our, our student athletes and our students and staff. Cause this will affect all the P E students as well. They use these facilities every day. Was that the last photo, Garrett? Okay, great. Thank you. So just a couple of other, uh, things to mention. As you know, we have two more major Esser projects that are, uh, underway and those will, uh, be worked on throughout the summer. And, uh, most, uh, most importantly, they have to be finished before we come back to school in August. So that's the, that's the real challenge there. And just a reminder, the, the McDowell High School kitchen upgrades with Esser funding, that's a one point six million dollar project. And the McDowell High School H V A C upgrades, which affects the gym and C T E spaces, that's a one point one million dollar project. And everything is underway. They did, uh, the folks on the kitchen project, uh, made great strides during spring break to get started. So that when school is out, so that when they can begin work on Saturday, June the eighth. Uh, they'll be able to move full speed and hopefully get everything in place by August twentieth. So are there any questions?
I have a question about the gym, the, um, the work in the gym this summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bennett maybe can, can address this as well. Um, cause I know for the, the basketball, the volleyball teams, they're major fundraisers. Are those camps in the summer, um?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what will, cause obviously if you've ever sat through a volleyball game in August, you're excited that it's gonna be air conditioned in there.
Yes, ma'am.
What does that look like for those teams as far as that and also as far as open gym? Cause I know volleyball season will start before we actually start back to school. So what does that look like?
The goal is for the gym to be completed, uh, the goal right now is twenty July. So that does mean they will not have access to the main gym from the end of school until that date. But that will allow them enough time to execute the upgrades and, uh, make the installations. So that when it is time for students to come back, they'll have the whole facility. During that time, they'll be able to use the auxiliary gym and they will have access to the locker rooms. But they won't have access to the main gym space while the work is going on, just for safety reasons, if nothing else. That's just not, that wouldn't be smart. Too many things going on in that space. And there's also the opportunity that we could, we may be able to use, uh, spaces that either. West Middle or East Middle gym space for the high school teams that need that kind of space during the summer months. During the end of June and the early part of July.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on the facilities update?
Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Absolutely. I thank them all the time, sir. I promise you. Thank you.
Item ten on our agenda this evening is correspondence. And Ms. Smith, is there any? Okay, all right. And following that is, uh, item eleven, request to address the board, public comment. Uh, we do have, uh, someone who is requesting to speak to the board this evening. Uh, Ms. Tess Parker. Uh, the topic she wants to speak about is the, says book ban. So, uh, is there a motion to hear or a motion to deny, uh, Ms. Parker to address the board? Okay. All right. So Mr. Schuford makes a motion to hear. And Ms. Hams, is that Ms. Hams? Okay.
Um, I tried to do this last.
Hang, hang on just one second. Hold on one second.
We just gotta vote.
That's all right. We just gotta get permission first. All right. So Mr. Schuford makes a motion to hear, the request to address the board. Ms. Hams made the second. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor, right hand? The motion carries unanimously. Now, I have to tell you that we welcome you here this evening and we're glad to hear what you have on your mind. And you have three minutes to tell us that.
Well, then anybody knows me knows that's a problem.
When you get pretty close, Ms. Dowdell right behind you there, she'll whisper to you thirty seconds or so. And we do ask that you mind your manners and your language as you speak to us.
I'll try to do that. Okay, uh, am I ready now?
You, you may begin.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I actually came back because the last time I really didn't say much. And I would like to make sure that my voice is heard on this. I am a retired school teacher and I taught English, uh, for fourteen years. And I taught, um, both tenth and twelfth grades. I'm going to address one book out of this list. There are several on there that, um, I could address, but the one I chose to speak about is Speak. And I'm really confused as to why it ended up on this, although in going and doing some research. I find that this book is constantly being banned. And the only thing that I can figure out, I have read this book. I have lots of my students who read this book. I did not teach it in the classroom, uh, but I kept it on my shelf for kids to be able to go to. The reason I want to speak to this is because. Children, and that's what they are in high school, they're just children. They experience so much more than what we as parents and adults. And I know that we all know this, but if you look at it, one out of nine children. One out of every nine children has experienced some kind of abuse. And if you look at that and you look at all of the girls that we have in our high school over here, there's what, six hundred? I think, I think I figured it out, something like six hundred and thirty some, I don't know. It's re- it was a large amount. And what concerns me about this is if we remove this, I can't find any reason to have removed it. Except for the fact that it has a bottom line base theme about rape. It is in all the way up to chapter thirteen. Before you even know what the girl is upset about. Rape's not mentioned, sex isn't mentioned, none of those things. Very, very, very few curse words in this book. I've had children to come to me, is it three minutes already? Oh, oh, God help us all. I knew this was gonna happen. But I have, in the time that I've been there, you can tell I'm an English teacher. In the time that I was there, I had children who would come to me and would thank me for having that book there. And the reason they did is because they had nowhere else to turn. And that book opened it up to where they could come to me and talk to me about what was happening. Or, and I could turn them to where they needed to go. And plus, always parents first. So I'm done.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, the book's important and a lot of the books that are on the list are. And it's the only voice that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Parker, for, for your words there. Okay. We'll move along then and, uh, down to item twelve, which is new business. And first up is Ms. Crystal Hamby to speak to us about McDowell Connect.
Good evening. Be able to share with you tonight.
Be able to share with you tonight about McDowell Connect, and I do have a brochure for you, if you would like to take one and pass it down. So, Mr. English, Dr. Garrett, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to have this opportunity to stand before you tonight to share about McDowell Connect, the new program that we will be offering in the fall for, uh, for our students here in this community. McDowell Connect came about as part of a program when thinking about how we are going to work to meet the needs of the students that are currently enrolled in our virtual academy, as well as work to partner with other students that are, uh, in our community that may not be pursuing a traditional, uh, education within McDowell County schools. So with McDowell Connect, this will allow us to provide a tailored educational opportunity, uh, for our students within McDowell County. This will be, uh, offered both online, virtually, and some seated courses. Uh, whichever way they choose, uh, for students choose to participate in this. This learning journey comes at no cost to our families. So, how does this work? So what our parents would do, uh, that chooses to participate in McDowell Connect, is that they would apply, apply for a homeschool license. And then they would have that, uh, and then students would be able to also enroll in classes with us that they may not, uh, have an opportunity to participate in. With this would, um, take effect for students in seventh through twelfth grade. So, we can offer some of the courses that you see listed in our brochure from our math classes, our English classes. Uh, but most importantly, one of the biggest pieces I feel like is a draw for some of the students in our community is our CTE course offerings. We're very proud of the work that, uh, Ms. Mary Finley and her team has been doing to, um, meet the needs of our industries here in this county, meet the needs of our student interest. So it would allow us to expand these opportunities and options to more of our students here within our community. Also, the only thing that we would ask is that students enroll in a minimum of two courses. If they enroll in a minimum of two courses, then they are considered full-time. Also, too, for, uh, our, uh, students that wish to participate in this, if they wish to play, uh, sports uh, or be a member of a club, we would ask that they enroll in three courses with us. So these courses will be offered in a variety of ways, as I've already, uh, stated. We may be offering some of these through, uh, North Carolina Virtual Public School. We may be offering some through our McDowell County Schools Virtual Programs, we have, uh, kinda like Edgenuity, some online courses that we have that we've used with the Virtual Academy. Uh, also, too, this would allow our students to take, uh, participate in, uh, McDowell Tech's Career in College Promise uh, along with our students as well. So really, it's a blended schedule, it's, uh, a homeschool integration piece with our, a partnership with our, uh, district. And, um, we would work with families to ensure that their basic needs are met, as far as making sure that they have the device that they need, that they have an opportunity to ask questions, that they have an opportunity to enroll, and, um, also get all of their questions answered. And we would have a district, a district learning advisor, uh, for them, to be able to reach out and have someone on site to talk with. The only cost that would come is, um, the same cost as, um, our McDowell County School students for the device. We do a forty dollar usage fee, but other than that, everything else is completely free. So, we would house the office for, uh, the McDowell Virtual Academy would be housed at McDowell High School. Um, and so, uh, that would be the place where, uh, they would need to get support. So, once again, I'm kinda recapping, in case I've left out anything, uh, to make sure that, um, you have all the information that you would need. So upon enrollment, we ask that the homeschool, that families would have a homeschool license through the Department of Non-Public Education. We would have an opportunity to look at the transcripts of the students, uh, and make sure that we're placing them in the courses that are appropriate. Of course, we want to ensure that they're in good academic standings before they en- uh, enter this process. And then we would work with each family to ensure that they are supported through this process. And no matter where they're learning, they're all of our students. So, um, I would be, I would welcome any, um, questions that you have at this time. And, um, as I come across some, it may allow me to share just a little bit more.
So, so this program is available to any student residing in McDowell County?
Yes, sir, that is correct, any student here in McDowell.
Regardless of whether they are currently enrolled with us in public education, or homeschooled, or any other setting?
That is correct, so if they're part of our McDowell Virtual Academy at this time, they can still continue their education with us. We would ask that their parents apply for a homeschool license, and that they would be able to continue their studies with us.
The opportunity for the student and the family is, is that some of the courses that a parent, or perhaps for lack of instructional staff at a private school, uh, it would be an opportunity for these students to participate in those. And also, in the Career and College Promise Program, we work collaboratively with the Community College.
Absolutely, it does not matter whether they are homeschooled, part of current, what is currently McDowell Virtual Academy, or part of a private school. They're all of our students here in McDowell, and we would, we would welcome, we would welcome them all to participate in the courses that we have available.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Hamby?
I just think this is really exciting, and I can't wait for our community to hear about this, you know, I mean, as a homeschooling family, if they want their kids to be dual-enrolled, um, they have to pay for that. But if they go through the school system, then they don't have to pay for those college courses, and they can count them as du- you know, dual enrollment, and get those high school and college credits at the same time, which is fantastic. And then, our career in technical education, our CTE department is so, I mean, across the state, we are one of the number one CTE departments in the offerings that we have. And, you know, our law and public safety, corrections and security, our agri, I mean, we just have so much that is hidden in our school system right now, and that our kids are getting an opportunity to participate in. But to be able to offer that out to Nebo Crossings or New Mana and say, look, you can take these law enforcement classes, if you're a student at Nebo Crossings and you wanna go into law or law enforcement, you can, you can dual enroll with us here, and you can get that. Um, and of course, families have the opportunity then to pick and choose what they may want, right? So, there's a reason why families choose a private school option or a homeschool option, which is fantastic. Um, but there are things that, as Mr. English said, that maybe they wouldn't be able to get um, because of, you know, maybe lack of resources, or just, you know, for whatever reason, that they can come, they can get those specific ones that they want, they can get college credit, and they can do all of this for free. And so I think that this is, this is a tremendous service to our community, not just those who are enrolled in public school system, but even those that are outside of the public school system in McDowell County, I think this is fantastic.
Yes, ma'am, so one of the things that we know is, things are changing, and we have to change when things change. And so this is an opportunity for us to think outside the box, and to provide our students and our families here in McDowell County with opportunities. The one thing with this, um, that I did not say, that I had on my notes and overlooked, is that if it is a, uh, EOC, EOG, or a CTE state assessment, we would, uh, students would still be required to participate in those state assessments. Uh, especially for CTE credentialing our EOCs and our EOGs, and so that's an important part that we will be sharing with parents as they sign up to participate, as we still have to participate in those state assessments.
And the clubs too, you mentioned, so DECA, as we just watch these young people, or these, the F, the future business leaders, um, of America. I mean, these are just excellent programs that parents can, can take advantage of for their students as well, is that right? If they enroll in, say, three courses with us, then they can be a part of these, these clubs?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And, and those, they're fantastic programs, so I think this is great.
Thank you.
I think I already know the answer to this, but I'm just gonna go off a little bit. Um, are these classes virtual? Or are they, are the kids coming into the schools and, and, and having the classes with our students?
It depends upon their interest.
Okay.
So there are classes that are virtual.
Okay.
And that's the majority.
Okay.
CTE would be face-to-face.
Obviously, yeah.
And, um, so it, it really varies. They also have an opportunity, if it is a c- a class that is seated, they still can come in and do that, even if we offer that in an online setting. So, we have a course catalog, and so we would sit down and, and kinda meet with them and go through that, and ensure that we're helping and listening, uh, to register for the classes that we have available. There are some, uh, CTE-like classes, and notice I said like classes, that are offered through some of our virtual programs that we subscribe to. They're just not credentialing classes. So we kinda have to look at those and talk to them, and make sure that folks understand the difference, and which ones would allow them to be credentialed versus these are kinda just like getting your feet wet.
Okay, so some of these that are virtual, are they self-paced?
Yes, but we do expect for them to be done in a timely manner, and so we would have a staff member that's checking in on that progress to ensure the success of students, and that they are maintaining a pace that would allow them to successfully complete that course in a timely manner.
Now my last question. So if you have a student that, let's say, is in seventh grade, and loves science and wants to take, and is enrolled in our school system, is a full-time student here, but wants to take eighth grade science, can they do that?
Ask me that one more time, if they're in the seventh grade and they wanna take an eighth grade.
You're just a normal seventh grade student at East Middle School, but you're really interested in science, and it's your passion. Is this an avenue that they could partake in, if it's a self-paced class?
I think that's something that we would need to talk with their parents about, and also with our team, and, and look at their overall academic success. It would be our desire to ensure that we're never setting a student up for failure.
Absolutely.
And that we're working to meet their needs, so I think as a team, working with their parents, coming together, uh, also working with that principal, decide what is in the best interest of that student. But I definitely love it when students choose to, to, uh, challenge themselves, and I think we see great success when students choose to do that.
I can just see some parents going down that avenue, and I was just curious what that, if this is more for that student that's in our community, that isn't necessarily a part of our student body right now, or if it's kind of a mixture?
I never wanna say absolutely not, I don't know that there are any absolutes.
Yeah.
But, um, in this sense, it always goes back to what's in the best interest of the student, based upon what we know.
I, and I can speak to that, because my son, my son did take two virtual classes, because he was, he was over at FCS. Um, he was advanced in his math, and they were struggling to get him over there, and so he did, um, I think he did a math class online, and then also he took a Spanish class when he was in the eighth grade, and it was through the virtual school. And so, um, it, it, those have been presented to parents when you've got students who have a, an ability to, to do it.
Gotcha.
Real quick, so I would assume mathematics is a real opportunity, because most, or many of us are not proficient in that, and would, would have some value of having, having a math, a math teacher. Um, second, can you, can you explain the financial gain to the public schools by offering? Um, I, I can kinda guess, but could you explain it to me?
So, uh, yes, sir, so when a student is enrolled in two courses per semester, then they are considered a full-time student with McDowell County Schools, and so with that full-time status does come ADM dollars.
And also, just wanted to remind folks that, as part of our strategic plan, we talked about being able to open things up more, um, for community. So that, this, this does two things. One, uh, we, we knew moving into this school year that our Virtual Academy, um, would, would suffer to try to keep that open, be able to keep an, or then bring on an alternative school. Um, so when we, um, pitched this idea to the, um, Executive Cabinet and, and the Learning Team, uh, this is kinda what they came back with, which I thought they took, took it, um, over and above, and, um, on, on what can be offered. Um, and, and, you know, there's, there's some other districts who are doing this, but certainly not leading the way yet. Um, but it seems to be working, um, in, in some of these other places as well. But, again, tonight, it's not, not necessarily looking for, um, y- you know, it's not a, a vote or anything, we just wanted to share with you our progress and how we're moving from closing, you know, or closing a virtual school, but ensuring that we've still got an option. Um, and if you, if you remember from the presentation earlier, uh, we have about thirty graduates, I think is what you read on there, that are graduating from the virtual school this upcoming year. Um, so we, we do, we have had parents express, um, concern with the virtual school going away. So this will be able to offer them, uh, something, y- you know, it's not exactly like the virtual school for that, um, but it does offer them something as well.
Any other questions?
Any, anything else for Ms. Hamby?
Thank you for allowing us to share this opportunity, and I do wanna take this time to publicly thank my team and the Learning Division staff, they've been working very hard to pull all this together, and so this would not be made possible without the team and all their support. So thank you for allowing us to share.
Next up, Ms. Dowdell is going to speak to us on the, uh, background check system.
Good evening, Mr. English, Ms. Pupo, Dr. Garrett, and members of the board. I'm excited to announce our decision to transition to a new background check company, BIB, or B-check, uh, for our background screenings and continuous monitoring of staff and volunteers. After thorough research and careful consideration, we believe that BIB offers the best in-class service that along with our requirements and, uh, priority, priorities. BIB brings a host of features and benefits that will significantly enhance our background screening program. Here are some of the specifics of what BIB offers. User-friendly interface, mobile compatibility, real-time dashboards and status updates, comprehensive, uh, package ordering, so meaning that we can choose what we want our packages to be. There's not one set, um, purchase that we have to make, so we're able to tailor that to what we need as a district. There's email alerts, transaction reports, applicant-directed order entry, flexible search, sort, and filter screens for our principals and administrators, real-time ETAs on order, applicant My Background Check Portal, custom applicant self-start portals, and integration-ready, meaning they can get started as soon as possible. So, um, BIB has been, um, in service of school systems all across North Carolina, and, um, are very equipped to handle the needs of a school system. And so, um, we are excited to announce that that is where we are moving. Uh, we've worked with them, they have had great customer service into getting us started. Um, so when you look at volunteering in the schools, or we look at hiring, uh, we are looking at going through BIB. So what questions do you have?
Can, can you tell us just, you know, the advantages of this particular, um, background check service compared to what we were using?
Yes, sir, so, um, what we were using previously, um, several years ago, and Mr. Oliver knows this extremely well, um, when he was, um, in this position, is that we used US Info. And US Info was actually, um, purchased by another company, and the company, um, is called Mind Your Business, and that is who we, um, have with, was with previously. Uh, Mind Your Business does a great job, but Mind Your Business, um, we are the first school system that Mind Your Business has, um, has worked with. So there are many things that, um, BIB has, already has in place that are, um, more compatible with what we do as far as school systems. And so with looking at employees and, um, the, the types of background checks that can be run, like statewide and, and federal, um, their platforms make it much easier, um, for our school system to use. We also have, um, an ability to choose a different type of package for like, let's say, our volunteers. So those that are just with students, um, while their supervision in there with them. Um, so there's just several different things that we're able to choose from, um, with BIB. And I, I keep saying that stands for, uh, Background Investigation Bureau. um, with BIB. And I, I keep saying that stands for uh, Background Investigation Bureau. Um, I'm just used to saying BIB constantly, but um, it, there are just a lot of platforms. They have um, already platforms built for specific schools. So that principals, when they are looking at volunteers at their school or they're looking at um, the statuses, they're able to see, go in and search for their specific site. They're able to go in and search if a volunteer has been approved out of middle school, that they have a younger child too. They're able to connect um, the students over multiple schools. And so that is definitely an advantage to us. Um, it makes it much more user-friendly for us to use.
And this is not only just for volunteers, this is for potential new hires?
Yes, sir. So it will be for all employees. Um, and so we will be doing um, a renewed background check on all of our current employees. We are working with them now um, to do that. And so that everything will be in their database. We were able to move all of our current employees and um, volunteers into a continuous monitoring system already through BIB. So all of our current employees, all of our current volunteers are in this system already being monitored from this point forward. Um, but uh, we will be running new background checks on all of our staff, of course. And then as we start into next year, we will have our new uh, volunteers um, go through this system and that will um, we, that will be good for three years because it will be continuously monitoring. And then we would have them um, be able to apply again and go back through the process.
I, I, I do understand that in the past, that sometimes the information that was gathered through a background search that we're required to do sometimes wasn't up to date. Is that?
Yes, sir. And so, um, because, uh, and I keep going back to this, but because their platforms are very are made specifically for school systems, um, then they do a great job by getting that information in real time. Um, and so we are updated um, constantly. And that's definitely something that, that we want to ensure um, who is around our children are supposed to be around our children.
Anything else for Ms. Dowdell?
Yes.
Uh, what's the cost of this program to our system?
Um.
And how does it compare to the other systems?
It's, it is actually about the same cost. Um, it is about thirty dollars a person um, to do a background check. It's a little bit less um, for our volunteers um, to do through that system because there's some extra checks that we do with employees as far as federal, looking at um, working with finances. Uh, because our volunteers don't necessarily work with finances.
Okay, so it's not unlimited checks. We're, 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 we're doing it individually. We get charged every time we do a check.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And what's the great thing um, that we have found with BIB is um, that if a person is already in there, because we have kids that move from school to school, of course, when you go from mid, elementary to middle to high school, what we were seeing was a lot of repeat um, background checks that we were running on the same person over and over again at each level that they were at. So this allows us to see who is already in the system. If that person is already in the system, then we do not run the um, because they're already being monitored or they've already got a background check. So that comes up as it's.
How deep does this go into the background?
It goes.
Do we hit NCIC?
Absolutely. And it does, um, all um, sex, sexual, um, what am I trying to say? Registries. Yes, sir.
States and foreign countries and everything.
It does. It does. Yes, sir. That was a good question. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Anything else? All right then.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, next item, uh, it's that time of year when uh, new appointees are made to the Board of Trustees at McDowell Tech. And historically, uh, the school board has had four appointees to that board. And we would uh, appoint or reappoint one each year. Last year, the state legislature changed the appointment system. And now the uh, county commissioners, they have always had four appointments to the board. But the school system's appointments have been moved to our House Representative. And the governor's appointments to the local Board of College Trustees have been moved to the Senate uh, that serves our district. So while uh, we are unable or not able to appoint a trustee, I would like to say just a word of thanks to Ms. Gwen Conley, whose term would be expiring this year for her many years of service on the Board of Trustees down there on behalf of McDowell County Public Schools. And also to tell you that if you do have a recommendation, those can certainly be forwarded to our House member, Mr. Green and Mr. Johnson. And also to our uh, State Senator, Mr. Daniels, or Daniel. And uh, also our county commission gets to appoint four appointees. Uh, you can forward your uh, recommendation to those folks as well. And I have talked to all of these folks and they are willing to take recommendations. They may already have their mind made, but they are willing to take a recommendation. So that point is just for information only. Next, uh, the board has been asked to consider a resolution. And uh, a lot of work has uh, happened here in McDowell County that needs recognizing. And I'm going to call on Mr. Abernathy, our board member, to uh, read a resolution proclaiming uh, Dr. Jim Gorsday on May twenty-fourth. If you would, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and Ms. Baker, I'm going to ask you in about five minutes if you would help me on this. Um, Dr. Gors, I, I won't read it, but I'll summarize different parts of the resolution. Resolution is a statement of, of board opinion. Um, and uh, this one would declare James Gorsday along with the, with the county commissioners uh, as the uh, Friday prior to Memorial Day. So it really started, the idea started with more of an emphasis on Dr. Gors' military background than his, than his public school background. But it quickly went into, went into that as well. Uh, Dr. Gors was born in nineteen thirty-one, meaning he's ninety-three years old. He's been married seventy-four years to Jerry. Uh, and he has uh, been a part of this community through his, through his entire career. He served in the Marine Corps for, for twenty years from nineteen forty-eight to sixty-eight. Uh, and was in both Korea and Vietnam. And I asked our ROTC guy if he had heard of the Battle of Chosan Reservoir. And uh, he was going to research it and have his students read about it. But that is the battle where the Chinese entered the war for the first time and overran uh, five UN and American divisions in weather that was forty degrees below zero. And they called them the Choson-Frozone because that more died from uh, the element than from the, from the battle. They had to fight their way out. They were basically encircled, overran by Chinese divisions and had, had to fight their way out. So he's, he's really quite a, quite a prominent military person. Uh, as an educator, uh, he was named Principal of the Year. He was the founding principal of Eastfield Elementary and was really the driving force behind that. Worked closely with um, Dr. Crawford and Dr. Ricketts on, on establishing the, the year-round program. It's very proud of that. I'm proud of the fact that that school is located in a, in an area that uh, of the county that has a lot of economic challenges and is, I guess, one of the poorer sections um, of the county and serves, serves that community. And he's, he's quite proud of that. He was a, a real visionary. We, we've got a rebel, uh, resolution coming up on pre-k. And uh, he was a, a very much a visionary in the, in the area of looking at pre-kindergarten education. And in doing that, uh, he worked to establish uh, the McSmiles Mobile Bus, which went around to s- young people, young children, prior to their uh, being of age to attend school. And having them learn the ABCs and to read and whatever, whatever they did. But he was, he was very instrumental in that. Always highly involved in the community. Won't go through all of that, but as you can imagine, he, he was on every committee and board and volunteered, affected thousands of, of students and um, instructors and parents and very much a, much of a loved person. And it just, it just hit us, me, that at ninety-three, we should um, think of him now and, and uh, honor him. And so, uh, he has um, what we did is Ms. Baker and I nominated him for the Order of the Longleaf Pine, which is the state of North Carolina's highest honor. And is issued out of the, out of the governor's office. It is, and I'm smiling with this, it's, it's not automatic. And there can be some challenges sometimes in dealing with the state and getting these things done. And Ms. Baker can, I don't know, maybe we shouldn't elaborate too much on the, on those challenges, but worked very hard to process that application. And we were told today that uh, it was in fact approved and that we would have the, the resolution in time for the celebration. So we are, we are quite pleased with that. I spoke to um, Jim today. And he is, he is excited. And the thing that he keeps saying is this, he, he just keeps saying, just make sure everybody understands it's not about me. That it's about, uh, bringing recognition to the school and to the instructors and to the students that are there. And he said, please, if you're doing this, to bring uh, attention to myself, don't, don't do it. And so we, we assured him of that. Ms. Baker, you want to help me? What, what do you, you, you've, she has just been unbelievable as far as.
This is just a real honor for Eastfield. Um, it's been very exciting to see community reach out and um, come and prepare some video messaging for Dr. Gors. Um, I think it's going to turn into a really great reunion um, for those that worked alongside of him. Um, and who really did some great work for and with McDowell County Schools. Um, at Eastfield, we do say we have a, a hashtag roots and wings. And it's not only important to look ahead, but it's important to remember those roots um, that go deep. And um, you know, the people that have gone before us um, to, to, to bring us where we are. And so it's just, it's an honor. I've met Dr. Gors one time. Um, and this is just a real honor for us to be able to host this um, and to celebrate him.
Ms. Abernathy?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, no, please.
I hope that you've taken care, or somebody's taken care. And I think it'd only be fitting and honor of you to have a flag that's been flown over the US Capitol. And a North Carolina flag's been flown over the North Carolina Capitol.
Well, let's, let's talk, Ms. Baker and I work through an agenda. And it starts, let's just talk about it. It's still amended if you see something that we've missed. But we start with, of course, our chairman uh, in the ROTC, in the, in the welcome. And we have um, Lieutenant Colonel Frank Dean doing five or six minutes on, and this is in front of the students. And I guess you've got a couple of hundred students that will be, will be in attendance along with with friends and parents. But uh, Frank uh, shows up in his uniform and he's a airborne guy and does, does these kind of, these kind of presentations. And then Mr. Frank, we do have, I appreciate your suggestion. We have got um, the congressman, or at least his um, representatives presenting a flag that's flown over Washington. We've got uh, Representative Green doing the, the state flag. We've got the um, the presentation of the, of the Order of the Longleaf Pine. And then we've got, I guess, uh, Mr. Walker declaring the day along with Mr. English. Uh, declaring it Jim Gorsday. So I, I hope we've covered um, those kind of things. We hope to do all this in less than an hour. And we've also got a, a former student um, that Ms. Baker picked out. And so, um, she's doing a video of uh, interviewing uh, and getting little snippets of, of of state, you're still taking those and doing those?
I just did one state with Mr. Mike Davis.
Okay, I'm.
No.
I'm going to do mine. So anyways, um, any questions?
I think it's an amazing idea. I appreciate you getting that organized. Um, it's definitely a recognition that, that he deserves. Unfortunately, I will be out of town that day and I hate to miss it, um, celebrating our wedding anniversary. So, but thank you.
It, it morphed from a military into a kind of a school, school life. But thank you.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Abernathy, would you care to offer a motion to approve the resolution naming Friday, May twenty-fourth? As Dr. Jim Gorsday.
I, I would be honored to make uh, a motion that the joint resolution declaring May twenty-fourth as James D. Gorsday um, be approved.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Schuford makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Abernathy and Ms. Baker. And we look forward to May twenty-fourth. Carrying on, uh, Mr. Abernathy mentioned the McSmiles program that was uh, instituted by Dr. Gors. And what that program was, if you're not old enough to remember, is they took an old activity bus and retrofitted it. And they took pre-k education out into the community. And from that program, as it began to get recognition across the state, Governor Jim Hunt came to McDowell County to see it. And you know, it wasn't six months later that Smart Start got started in North Carolina. And then it wasn't but just a little while later till NC pre-k got started. So I, I want to believe that Dr. Jim Gorsvision got the ball rolling on statewide pre-k programs.
He'll tell you he did it with David and John.
Okay. So, uh, for the last few months, the board itself here has been talking about how we can uh, fund and keep our pre-k program going in the county. And uh, Ms. Hamby, uh, Dr. Greit, myself and Ms. Pupo, we've uh, been talking informally with other uh, parties in the county about how that might be possible. And one of the, one of the possibilities is to uh, to uh, provide the state legislature with a reason to fund universal pre-k, particularly in McDowell County, even if on a trial basis, as a pilot or whatever. And one of the ideas that grew out of the informal conversations was, was that all the community partners should join together to be supportive of this idea. And just as we did with the uh, My Future NC program, which uh, we are a party to, that promotes education beyond high school to young adults and older adults in our community. Uh, the group finally came to realize that we need to, as a community, be investing on the front end of that education as well. And so the, there's broad. And so the, there's broad support out there. This very evening, we will consider a, a resolution supporting pre-K here in the county. The county commissioners will be considering a resolution to support it. The Board of Trustees at McDowell Tech will be considering a resolution at their meeting this week, I think. Right? And the Economic Development Authority is also going to be considering the resolution. So all of the players that had been involved on the back end are also now involved on the front end. And we're hoping that, uh, there might be enough evidence to persuade a legislature to stand up and argue our case before the state legislature. So this evening, since, uh, I'm bad to roam and ramble and sometimes my diction isn't as clear as it should be, I've asked our esteemed vice chairperson, who, uh, by the way, has perfect locution. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've asked her to read the resolution so that you will understand what it is we're asking of our legislature. The floor is yours, madam.
Thank you. And I, and I will say too that, you know, one of the things that continues to come out of this and on the post and, you know, the NC, um, or My Future NC is that something that has been said before about McDowell County is that county commissioners, all of these organizations work so very well together. And this really is a testament to that again, of just how very unique our county is in, in the way that we work together. Um, and so very excited to read this today. And I will go ahead and just read it because I'm not quite as versed in this as Mr. Abernathy was and the work that he's been doing, um, for Dr. Gorst. So, uh, this is a resolution by the McDowell County Board of Education for additional funding to continue successful universal pre-kindergarten program in McDowell County Schools. Whereas, research shows that high-quality pre-kindergarten, pre-K programs provide short-term and long-term economic and academic benefits to communities. And whereas those benefits include better-positioned students enrolled in pre-K, better-positioned students enrolled in pre-K for success later in life, creates more employment opportunities for parents and guardians, and overall reduces financial burdens. And whereas, McDowell County Schools has eight elementary schools, each of which is a Title I school. And whereas all eight of those elementary schools provide a pre-kindergarten program. And whereas pre-COVID, McDowell County received funding through DHHS and the federal government for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven qualifying four-year-olds to attend NC pre-K, which totaled approximately fifty-two percent of the annual birth rate cohort. And whereas McDowell County Schools received a Dogwood Health Trust grant to offer universal pre-K beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. And whereas over the past three years since the start of the universal pre-K, McDowell County Schools kindergarten literacy readiness has improved nearly fifteen percent and is expected to continue rising. According to the dynamic indicators of basic literary, literacy skills, also we know this is DIBELS data. Whereas McDowell County Schools currently serves an expanded group of sixty-seven additional families, bringing the total to seventy-two percent of the annual birth rate cohort in universal pre-K who do not qualify for the NC pre-K program. And whereas pre-kindergarten programs have proven to be worthy, a worthy investment, every one dollar invested in pre-K saves taxpayers up to thirteen dollars in future costs for incarceration, education, tax collection increases, and welfare. And whereas further research of high-quality pre-K programs indicate a strong correlation to language acquisition, acquisition and literacy, as well as math, social emotional skills, and executive function. And whereas with the addition of four new classrooms, McDowell County Schools projects serving eighty-five percent of all eligible pre-K students during the twenty-four, twenty-five year, school year. And whereas McDowell County Schools' past use of universal pre-K grants, now that, which have since, um, expired, have proven positive for students and the community. Whereas the McDowell County Board of Education is committed to providing a solid educational foundation for all students at McDowell County Schools. And whereas the cost of universal pre-K program for McDowell County Schools is roughly five-hundred thousand a year. Whereas McDowell County Board of Commissioners, the McDowell County, or Chamber of Commerce, McDowell Economic Development Authority, and the McDowell Technical Community College find the McDowell County Schools' universal pre-K program a benefit to the local economy in both the short term and long term and believe the program should be continually funded. And now, therefore, it be resolved, be it resolved that McDowell County Schools' Board of Education and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners respectfully request recurring state funding for universal pre-K by either, one, counting pre-K students in elementary schools who do not qualify for NC pre-K or Head Start towards ADM, or two, creating a pilot program that includes McDowell County Schools, or three, some other means determined by the General Assembly. This will be adopted as, as our vote, um, by the McDowell County Board of Education of McDowell County Schools today, if we go, if we do so.
All right. So you've heard the resolution. Would there be a motion to, uh, support the resolution?
So move second.
Ms. Mumal makes the motion. Ms. Silver makes the second. Is there any discussion? Now's your opportunity to chime in.
Well done. Very well done.
It, it, it really has been a true community effort. It sure has. And I, I can't begin to thank my fellow board members for all the conversations when you bump into people out in the public for supporting these. No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you all. Our next item, item thirteen on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And, uh, unless an item needs to be considered separately, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening? Mr. Chairman, you kind of got out of order. Well, I'll be a monkey, so. Let's rewind and go back to new business. Board reports. Okay. Mr. Frank, your name's listed first, so tell us about.
I don't have it.
Budget.
But, but I was gonna, I was gonna relinquish my time to Mr. Settles and tell us what's going on in the ballgame.
Yes, yes, yes.
You guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
So it is, uh, two to one, uh, they have runners on first and bug. And three, two to two. So two to two on the bottom of our fourth.
Okay. Lay in there. Okay. Do you have anything to report from building and grounds, Mr. Settles?
No, Mr. Oliver, do a great job.
Okay. Just one thing I would like to mention as far as building and grounds. I'm so proud of this board for finally getting the tennis facility completed in time for Mr. Brown, the longtime tennis coach, to be able to enjoy it before his recent passing. Uh, I, I think that's what he was living for. Okay. Curriculum and instruction. Well, while you have the floor, would you like to tell us about Head Start?
Always.
All right. We're all ears.
Um, today at, at our Head Start Policy Meeting, um, had some great information. Um, I shared last month that, uh, Congress had approved the cost of living increase. And, uh, they were given the, excuse me, given the money, dollar amount, uh, each, um, recipient at, with our Head Start Programs will receive a two-point-three-five percent cost of living increase, which is good. Um, it's, it's nowhere near what it needs to be. I'm excited about that resolution for NC pre-K. But in addition to that, we've got to continue to advocate for these people. Um, just in comparison, um, private daycares in the county, their beginning employees start at around, around fifteen dollars an hour. Our beginning employees in the Head Start Program will start at about twelve dollars an hour. And McDonald's play, pays about ten dollars and fifty cents an hour. And I, I just, I think that that's huge when we're asking people to work with our youngest learners and we're paying them what people get paid to work at a fast food restaurant. So I think that that's something that we've got to keep at the forefront of our minds is, is just all of the, the data. I mean, I, I, Ms. Hamby and I get tickled because I could talk about data all day long and talk about our early learners all day long. But just, just to say that, um, that their final scores in this, uh, class comparison scores, class is an acronym that stands for a lot of stuff about how much progress they've made. Um, the national average, uh, for a threshold, um, is at two-point-three in instructional support. And our Head Start Programs had doubled that. Um, the national average for emotional support is a five. And our Head Start Programs were six-point-oh-five. And so we were well above the national average on both of those. The area that they're going to continue to work to, um, to build support among their staff is, uh, the area of classroom organization, which deals with behavior management, productivity, and instructional learning formats, and talk to any classroom teacher anywhere. And the behaviors that came back after COVID are something that they're all dealing with. Um, but very proud of Dr. Delaney and her staff. I asked Garrett, if he would, to share a couple of pictures from the, um, two, two, uh, activities that we had. Uh, this is at Old Ford Elementary. Dr. Delaney and, and her staff were very complimentary and thankful to Old Ford Elementary for letting them use this multipurpose room for the preschool prom. Um, they had, I wrote that down, where did I write it down? Oh, it's, it was called Out of This World Prom. There were a hundred and twenty-five children and parents there. They studied, um, movement and coordination activities. Uh, she definitely wanted to thank the family advocates, Old Ford Elementary, Dr. Delaney, and Tammy Crisp for their work on that. Um, and Old Ford allowed them to come in a couple of days ahead of time to get it, and it's just, again, just great cooperation and collaboration. And then the next slide is, uh, let's go, keep going and keep going and keep going. This is still at the, at the preschool prom. Okay, and so then this is the, um, Dancing With Daddy Day. This continues along with the Father-to-Father Initiative. Um, and I love that down there. I will say this, y'all know this, after three and a half years of me being on the, um, board, I will get a horse out of the ditch, beat it some more, put it back in the ditch. I cannot overemphasize the importance of our children seeing positive male role models. And that quote down there at the bottom, men united to become better men, fathers and leaders. Our children are desperate to have good, quality male role models. This was such a success, um, Dancing With Dad, uh, thirteen dads attended with their kids. And so those are some, just some shots. And one of the dads that was there is on our Head Start Policy Council. And he shared today just how much this experience meant to him and his family. And so can't say enough good things about that. And as always, Head Start's hiring. Um, we need a instructional assistant full-time at Head Start, um, early Head Start lead teacher full-time, and early Head Start part-time custodian. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Ms. Pupo, anything from policy?
As you heard from Dr. Grit, soon we will have a policy committee meeting. I'll let you know when.
All right. Okay. So now we'll move on to item thirteen, which is approval of the consent agenda. And if no one has an objection to considering the whole agenda as one lump sum, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Okay. Mr. Frank makes a motion and Mr. Schuford makes the second. Any discussion? All right. If not, then all in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. So now, uh, discussion items, uh, you saw enclosed in your packet the proposed, uh, board meeting schedule for next year, which looks a whole lot like this year. There was one, two meetings that maybe was going to have to be on a different date. Right. Right. So, uh, we can consider this further next month, but our meeting night for November of this, this coming November happens to fall on Election Day, doesn't it? Veterans Day, I'm sorry, Veterans Day. And that is a legal holiday for schools in the county. So y'all be thinking, if you want to meet that night or propose an alternate date. Okay. Uh, the next item we need to talk a little bit about is, uh, board work session for the month of May. Is there anything pressing that you feel like the board needs?
I don't think so at this time. I feel like I could do a, a good job of keeping everybody apprised of what's going on in May in the weekly review. Um, with the retirement dinners, the banquets, the athletic awards and, uh, the, the student awards that we've got coming up and as well as graduations right around the corner. Um, my, my recommendation would be that we don't have a work session in May.
Any, anyone else? Okay. So, uh, then, uh, if there's no reason to have a work session, maybe we shouldn't have a work session.
Yeah, we'll alter.
Okay. Okay. So now then, the board will, uh, entertain a motion to move into closed session. And, uh, Mr. Campbell, would you care to tell us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The motion would be pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one to discuss matters, confidential personnel matters, subject to General Statute one fifteen C three twenty, excuse me, three nineteen to three twenty-one. Also to discuss confidential student matters pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C four and two and Family Education Law Act, subsection A three, to discuss matters governed by attorney.
And also under subsection A five to discuss the terms of a contract for employment.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. All right. So is there a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
A motion by Ms. Mumal, second by Ms. Helms. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. Let's take about a five-minute recess.